Okay, welcome everyone to the Judiciary Committee meeting this Friday afternoon at four thirty. An unusual time for a hearing, but it is conference time, so that's what we're left with. If we have a catastrophic technical failure, we'll pick up at four thirty one P M on Monday, April twenty five. In this room, two twenty five and on video conference, and we'll post a notice on the Justice website. For those testifying either in by Zoom or at person, and we do have a two minute limit on testimony, and if you're on Zoom, you'll be muted and with your video off until it's your turn to go. Okay. First up today, we just have one agenda. It's a G M agenda, a governor's message agenda. We have six governors nominees for various positions, and we'll start with Governor's Message Message seven seventy one for consideration and confirmation of Defender Council, gubernatorial nominee David Hayakawa for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. First up for seven seventy one is Lee Hayakawa, Lee S. Hayakawa, Assistant Public Defender in support. And Stephen R. Nichols, Deputy Public Defender, also in support. Chris Cryon, Deputy Public Defender in support. Lars Isaacson, Attorney in Support. Jason Say, Esquire in Support. Full tear Gonset, Esquire in Support. Jessica Domingo in Support, also an attorney. And let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, nineteen other individuals all in support. That's all the testimony we have. We don't have anybody asking questions of. So if Mr. Hayakawa is here. Good afternoon. If you'd like to make an opening statement, that'd be great.
Yes, thank you Chair Rhodes and members of the committee. I appreciate your time. As I've been a public, I was a public defender for the first twelve years, thirteen years of my life. It was a actually, that was when the ice epidemic hit. So it was a crazy time, and I have very fond memories of it. I have continued to work now in private practice. I'm a full-time criminal defense lawyer. I value mentoring, especially young public defenders. I'm also the dean of the Bar Association Trial Academy, for instance. And I, even before I was on the council, I would frequently poke my toes down there to see who I could help. And I've really enjoyed my one year on the council. I believe we're really starting to hit our stride on what we can really do to best impact the office. And I would like the opportunity to continue that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, any questions? Do you have a question? Sort of overall policy for the Public Defender's Office? We don't talk about it a lot, but it is always, my impression has always been that the Public Defender's Office, they're just overwhelmed with cases. And which is largely a function of, I think, largely a function of resources. Is that, would you like to comment on that, that, that idea?
Well, first of all, they have very heavy, heavy caseloads. And well, arguably, everyone in the system is overworked right now. I do believe that despite that, they it just takes the effort, extra effort that allows them to achieve and really produce. And I think that stems from the spirit of the office. You know, you don't go to the public, you're joining a living organization when you go there, and people who are not into that or don't have that motivation tend to drop out pretty quickly. So even though there are heavy caseloads and not enough staffs, they could do with a lot more staff support and resources. It's kind of that public defender, we're going to do our best and make do. That being said, we clearly welcome additional funding for the office, including positions. I think the council is looking at that to see how we can support the excellent work by done, being done by the administration of the office to make you and Chair Rhodes and your committee aware of our needs and how best we can spend money. And I mean, there are some major disparities in pay structures, especially on the neighbor islands where the counties are able to really exceed salaries than any state employees out there. And so that is an issue. And just as well as overall staff support and more attorney positions.
Okay, but I mean, it's fair to say, though, that if I mean, it seems like it almost doesn't need to be said, but if you have a, as an attorney, if you have a smaller caseload, you can do better for each of your clients.
Without a doubt, you can, you know, but again, I think it's a the thing about our Public Defender's Office, especially being a statewide office, is they're really, you know, we do not have a churn and burn, let's just move our way through a calendar philosophy. The lawyers in the office take great pride in representing their clients. And when a client wants to go to trial, we go to trial, and that might separate us from many. I'm not questioning other offices across the country, but it really does demonstrate the spirit within the office. And when that happens, all the other lawyers jump in to help whoever the lawyers who are in trial. And I will especially say, maybe it's not right on point, but during this pandemic, I started the jury trial last week, and coming out of the pandemic, the buildup of the backlog is just crushing because we have all these cases that were ready to go to trial two years ago, and we've had all the cases that are there now, and they are just stacked up. And I really think across the board in the entire system, not only the the public defenders, private lawyers, the hardworking prosecutors and their staff and the judges, you're going to see a lot of burnout as we get to three, four, or five months from now.
Okay, understood. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Hayakawa. Members, any other questions? If not, thank you for being here, and we will move on to the next G M. The next Governor's Message is G M seven eighty eight. This is for consideration confirmation of the Commission on the Status of Women. Tamara McCarren for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. First up on G M seven eighty eight is Hala Lopi McKenzie. Sign up for Zoom.
Present, Chair.
In opposition. Inani Okalani Kahoolhano. Also signed up for Zoom.
Also not present, Chair.
Also in opposition. Okay, next is Holly Olson in support, Ruth Anderson in support. Shirley Sayadian in support, Anne Ray Hall M D in support, Katie Milton in support. Joe Vogel in support, John Vogel in support, Robert Johnson in support, Alani Bhagkhal in opposition. Nikia Imanor Azoa Agulugub, sorry, Agulugub in opposition. Ashley Galakak in opposition, Kimberly Barris in support, Jennifer Johnson in support. And that's all the testimony we have and no one asked questions of, so we'll go ahead and move to to Dr. McCarren. Good afternoon.
Hi, hello.
If you'd like to make an opening statement, go ahead.
So I am an O B G Y N doctor, and I work for H P H now. I also came to the island initially in two thousand and four with the military, so I've lived here almost eighteen years. I have experience taking care of our military beneficiaries as well as our local population. I've worked, I currently work on Oahu, but I've also worked in Maui as well as Kona and Hilo. And I am an advocate for women's health, obviously, and women in general. And I hope to expand my experience, my knowledge, and my help to the Commission on the Status of Women for Hawaii.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any questions? Senator Kasey, go ahead.
Aloha, thank you. So in looking at your resume, it's very clear that you have an extensive professional history with O B G Y N and healthcare, as well as your service in the military for military families. So mahalo for your, your service on that. So my questions are really geared around the relevancy and, and whether the commission is a, is a good fit for you and vice versa, and not in question of your, your professional capacity. So, you know, in looking at the, the state website on Hawaii State Commission and Status of Women, their mission statement clearly says that it's a feminist government agency. And it's a feminist economic recovery. It's feminist economic recovery has been recognized by the United Nations and national thinktakes on gender equality. Are you a feminist? Why or why not?
So by feminist, I assume that you mean someone that advocates for equal rights of women, and absolutely, I am. I'm a woman. I work in medicine, which is for, at least surgery, male-dominated. I worked in the military, male-dominated, and I've had firsthand experience of gender discrimination and some unfair practices just because I'm a woman. And I fortunately have been in positions in my professional career where I've been able to rebuff that. And so I want to work toward helping other women that maybe are not in positions to defend themselves or rebuke any of that.
Chair, may I continue? So with the materials you submitted, there was no real, clear documented history of work or, I mean, advocacy specifically? Can you expound on where you have advocated? You know, in, for, for women, especially women of color? And, and what that advocacy particularly entails?
Sure, so my role has generally just been healthcare, and of course, also being in the military, I've had positions where I've been a teacher, mentor. I have raided other officers, other female professionals. So I have worked to advocate for women and getting their promotions, mentoring women in trying to navigate the system to get to where they want to go and meet their goals. And using my position as a leader to give women of all ethnicities and a variety of different skill sets the ability and the opportunities to meet their full potential.
Oh, yes, for now, but I have quite a few questions.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'll just, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here this afternoon and for your willingness to serve. My question is, how did you come about wanting to serve on the status of women? Were you asked to serve? Did you just decide one day that this is something you want to serve on, or?
So I get the newsletter from Representative Sharon Har. And in the newsletter, one of her newsletters, she mentioned opportunities to serve on different commissions and committees. And I looked through the list that was in her e-letter, and this had come up, and I went to the website and saw the things that they did, and I thought it would be interesting. You know, most of what I have done and do for women locally is healthcare and health advocacy. And I just thought it would be another way that I could offer my services and potentially help our local women. I, I really, I, I, this is my home. I love living here. I love our patients. I love our women. And what I, whatever I can do to help them, to advocate for them, I'll take that opportunity.
Thank you. So were you with the governor, did you meet with the governor or meet with the chair of the Status of Women? And then, you know, they vetted your name to come down to us? Is that what happened?
No, I just, I did the application. I just followed the directions on the application, and I got the I got the letter from the governor endorsing my application.
Okay, so nobody met with you or interviewed you?
No, I did have a conversation with Senator Rhodes on the phone, I think about ten days ago, maybe now.
But prior to them accepting your, your application and sending your name to us, you didn't meet with any, any, any one of me. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, members, any other questions? Senator Kasey, go ahead.
So the commission and its current executive director are very vocal about protecting traditional midwifery. And will you commit to ensuring that she and the commission will continue to do so?
I think midwifery has a very valuable place in the care of women. And I mean, as long as it's safe practices and practices under standard of care, then yeah. I've had great experiences with midwives.
So from your perspective in the healthcare system, do native Hawaiians need to be licensed to practice midwifery?
Well, I think that there should be some educational and training standards that should be met.
As far as key trends in women's rights presently and top priorities of women's rights organizations in Hawaii, what, what do you think? What stands out to you as the key trends?
For women's rights in Hawaii or in general?
Yeah, women's rights presently in Hawaii, and so top priorities of women's rights organizations in Hawaii.
Well, I think that the economic recovery was interesting, the report online. And I think also what I found interesting and important is doing the best we can to help single women. Single women with childcare as well as working and doing our best to facilitate them being able to participate actively in the workforce, but also have childcare.
I do have macho, if I, if I may.
Let me ask him first, and then I'll come back to you.
No problem. Thank you.
So you said now that you work for, you no longer work for the military?
I don't. I was working as a contractor at the Navy, and that job ended on April eighth.
Oh, just recently. So who are you working for now?
Well, I work for H P H. I work at Polimomi. Yeah, I've worked for Polimomi since two thousand and eighteen. I was working full-time for the Navy and per diem for Polimomi, so now I'm, went back to Polimomi part-time.
Okay, but at this point, you're not working for the military at all?
I'm not.
Okay. So in terms of, you know, if the, the commission decided that they wanted, needed to take, felt, you know, if the consensus on the commission was you needed to take a stance that was contrary to what your current employer, what the policy of the hospital was, what would you do in that situation?
Well, I want to make, I would firstly want to make sure that my interpretation of the policy was correct. And if there was of the hospital, of the hospital policy, and just clarify, is there really a conflict here or not? And then if it was a clear conflict, then I suppose it would depend on what the, what the issue is. And I think it's just about communication. And of course, I also don't want to get into any sort of legal weeds either. You know, I do need to practice within the confines of my employer as well. But I think it would just be a matter of understanding the issue and then working with the people who are involved to, if it is an actual stark contrast, I could possibly, I don't know what the correct term would be, recuse myself or, or try to come to some sort of compromise.
Okay, okay, thank you. Senator Kasey, go ahead.
No, I had a similar question, which was, would you feel comfortable publicly criticizing failures of the healthcare system, including hospitals if needed by the women's community and women's rights advocates, because the commission functions as a consumer advocate for women? And especially with regards to the healthcare system. So if you were in that scenario, so pretty much similar. If there was anything you wanted to add.
Well, I think criticisms, I think as long as it's based in data and fact, you know, if it's, if it's, the data supports what we're saying, then I think that yes.
Sorry, yes, yes, you would criticize the, the healthcare system. Okay.
So I have a follow-up, Chair, if that's okay. Similarly, the commission provides oversight on the U S military in regards to women's well-being and has spent years earning the trust of women in the community by showing its willingness to criticize the negative impacts the U S military presence in Hawaii. Will you be comfortable criticizing if or, you know, you know, taking a particular, you know, harder stance on the U S military and advocating in the interests of women if it means advocating against the interests of the military?
Again, as long as it's based in fact and data, if that's what the data parses out, then sure.
Are you still?
Okay, remember any other questions?
I could check with the executive director. Is she online?
I'm sorry, who?
Executive Director of the Women's
Oh, I don't know.
Commission of Status of Women.
I am, if you can hear me.
Oh, good, Kara. Hi, I've got a question. What is the process for the nominees to come before us? Do they go through an interview process or?
That process doesn't go through me. You know, there is a standard practice of folks, you know, reaching out to me to get to know the director and ask questions first, but that's not a written standard. So typically, it would go through the director of our home department, and we are right attached to D H S, so.
And so you don't get, you're not, you're not asked to pine on any, any of the candidates or anything like that?
Um, we, yeah, sometimes we are, right? Because we're the impacted agency, so certainly, you know, if we know a candidate. In this case, we did not. So that's, I, I don't have any further information.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jeff.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right, I think, thank you very much, Doctor, for being here, and we'll move on to the next G M, which is G M eight one eight. This is submitting for consideration confirmation to Board of Registration of the Isles, the Islands of Kauai and Ni'ihau. Ralph Krishney for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty six. The eighteen, first up is Mary Maylet Garsus, General Manager for Princeville and Holly Community Association Kauai. In support, Michael Fay for Keke Oola Construction Company in support, Gil Smith support, William Cameron How, How, Howfi in support, Peter Baldwin in support, Steve Entile in support, Norbert Baylor in support, Joe Clemmison in support, Anna Modess in support, James O Castle, James O Castle Junior in support. That's all the testimony we have on G M eight one eight, and none of them are here, so we have no one to ask questions of. So, Mr. Krishney, if you're here, you're welcome to have, give an opening statement.
Not present, Chair.
Not present. Okay, well, that's that. We'll move on to G M seven eighty nine. This is for consideration confirmation, the Commission on the Status of Women of Marisa Adaro for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. First up on G M seven eighty nine is Susan Murray, Susan Murray. So you? No, you're, okay, in support. Hala Lopi McKenzie on Zoom.
Not present, Chair.
In support. Ki, Ki Inani Okalani Kahoolhano.
Also not present, Chair.
In opposition. Eric Barsatan in support, Tina Awakuni in support. Alani Bhagkhal in opposition, Nikki Imanor Azoa Agulugub in opposition, Charon Pope, Executive Director of Couple A Chamber of Commerce in support, and Ashley Galakak, also in opposition. And that's all the testimony we have on G M seven eighty nine. This is all which was come forward and make an opening statement.
Good afternoon, Chair Rhodes. Good afternoon, Chair Rhodes and the committee members. I'm Marissa Adaro, and I am grateful to be here. I am honored to be, have this opportunity to be considered for, to serve on the Commission on the Status of Women. I'm looking forward to really just working, continuing the work, the great work that's being done to improve the status and well-being of women and girls. And I'm happy to take any questions that you may have with me.
Okay, thank you. No more questions?
Can I start by just asking the same question I asked of the last nominee? So did you, were you asked to serve? Or you just, how did you come about wanting to serve? And was there a process prior to your name being sent to us?
Sure. So, you know, I had a conversation with a colleague, Colette Masanaga, over a year ago, and I was asking her about opportunities to serve outside of work, and so she actually provided some information and submitted my interest at that time.
So you applied online?
Yes, I did.
And were you, were you interviewed at all?
I was contacted recently. I was able to have some time to speak with.
Prior to your name coming down, how did you, how did you get selected to be one of the nominees?
You know, I was, I was just contacted from, I don't remember the person's name, but I was contacted, and
From the governor's office?
I'm sorry, from the governor's office? Yes, correct.
And you received a letter?
Yes, yes, correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes, so it's very similar questions. The Commission on Status of Women is a feminist government agency as it stated on its, on the mission statement on, on the government website. And feminist economic recovery has been recognized by the United Nations and thinktakes on gender equality. Do you consider yourself a feminist? And if you can elaborate on that, and why or why not?
So I, to be transparent, I guess I never really called myself a feminist, but if, you know, it means, you know, advocating for women's rights. I believe in that, and if the issue is around equality, then, then I believe that that's a definition, yes.
What legislation or let's say campaigns, et cetera, are, has the commission engaged in that specifically that you're interested in or have supported?
Sure. So this is all new to me, but I have, you know, done some research, and what really intrigued me was the Economic Recovery Act that they've worked on during COVID, you know, really building back better and trying to be innovative. And then also, you know, the recent period poverty. I mean, I've never looked at that in that way, and I think that's a such a great kind of perspective, and so it intrigues me, and it's, it interests me, and I'd like, you know, to get involved.
Oh, yes, for now, Chair.
Okay.
If anyone has others.
Other questions? Certainly, no. Okay, let's see, I think I did have a question. What was it? Hang on. So, so sort of the same question I asked the previous Dr. McCarren on, I think you currently work for a medical organization as well. If, if you're, what will you do with, what, what does the commission decides, you know, you're part of the commission, so you have a vote. If, if you're, what will you do with, what, what does the commission decides, you know, you're part of the commission, so you have a vote. But if you decide that you need to say something critical about the policies that your, um, employer has, what would you do?
So, you know, we have a great government relations department, I mean, I, I, I'd, um, certainly consult with that team and, and, you know, ensure that, you know, there's no conflict, um, as far as my role and my professional role.
Okay, so then what happens after you consult?
Um, you know, I guess it would depend on the, um, issue at hand and then I guess the consult, consultative guidance that's provided to me, that I would, um, then make a decision, kind of moving forward, what, what stance to take.
Okay.
So it's a follow up to that, but it's a little bit more direct, um, in a sense, um, you know, because the commission functions as a consumer advocate for women, um, especially with regards to the healthcare system. Will you feel comfortable publicly, um, criticizing failures of the healthcare system or, and then obviously working to improve them, um, including hospitals, um, if needed, right, by, by women's community, women's rights advocates, et cetera?
So, you know, that in, I, healthcare, as in any industry, there's always opportunity for improvement, so if in general, it's an issue that needs to be addressed, um, you know, not specific to, um, a certain medical center, but just, you know, healthcare is is, uh, like you said, important in this, uh, you know, for women and girls, and so, um. Just, yeah, I, um. I would be, I would be fine speaking to general issues.
Important, especially if it comes to improving.
Yes.
And advocacy for equality, justice.
Correct.
Um, inequity. Um, so on that note, I'm going to ask the same question, just because you're in the healthcare field, although we had a, a different scenario in the, um, in the previous, um, GM, but, um, you know, the executive director, as well as, um, the commission has been very vocal about protecting traditional midwifery and, um. You know, so it's a couple of questions would be, will you, will you, do you commit to ensuring that she and the commission will continue to be able to do so and advocate for that? And then an additional question in that same subject is, um, from your perspective in the healthcare system, do native Hawaiians need licensure or need to be licensed in order to practice midwifery?
So I think for the first question, I definitely, you know, the executive director and that's their, um, stance, that's fine. Um, I don't really know much about the issue though, that we're, we're talking about, so I, um, I think I just have to learn a little bit more to see. Yeah.
Yeah, that's fair. Um, yeah, that's fair. Okay, I do have one more question.
Sure.
That's okay, Chair.
Yep.
Okay, um, so Hawaii is a minority majority state. And the commission is called to advocate for the unique needs of native Hawaiian and women and women of color, which require an understanding of the system, systemic racism. Can you share your understanding of systemic racism and how it impacts women in Hawaii?
Sure, so, um. Wow. That's a great question. Uh, so systemic racism, uh, you know, uh, I guess, kind of stemming back, right? Um, the organization that I serve, that I professionally, um, work with, Queens Health System, right? Founded by, uh, the King and Queen and, um, and so the basis of, um, of health and sort of that traumatic cultural, um, cultural trauma that happened, you know, that it exists, um, it's, um. I was in track of the question, can you repeat the?
No, no, it's fine, it was a big one.
That was a, yes.
Uh, share your understanding of systemic racism and how it impacts women in Hawaii.
So, um, definitely, uh, you know, women, um, in Hawaii tend to be, um, you know, the sole caregivers. Uh, sole decision makers and a lot of times not given all the resources they need to, um, to do that successfully. I don't know if I'm blowing off, but, um, you know, it's there, it exists, basically it exists and, um, that's why the commission exists and why we're still here talking about, uh, these issues that we need to continue to work on.
What are some ways to fix it? I know there's a million, but like, you're.
No, no, so sure, no, so it's awareness, um, a lot of times it's, it's the awareness and getting down to, I think the key is getting to those who are dealing with the issues, listening to their kind of perspective on things, and then that's where you start, it's, it's getting those, um, issues there. That's where you start the, the work. And developing the strategy around what, what needs to be done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? If not, thank you very much for being here, I'm going to call on short recess. Okay, coming back from recess on our judicial committees four thirty agenda, next up is GM's seven eighty seven. Uh, for Deja Ostrowski for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty six for the Commission on the Status of Women. Uh, first up is, uh, Cara Jabula, Jabula Corulus, Executive Director of Hawaii State. Hawaii State Commission on the Status of Women. Guess you're still here.
Thank you, Chair, um, don't worry about the name, even my family members don't always get it. Um, so, you know, we are, we're, we're supporting the reappointment of Commissioner Ostrowski. Um, you know, she, her reputation, um, uh, precedes her, she has been a veteran, um, civil rights and women's rights um, advocate and public interest lawyer for many years. She's proven to be a really, um, invaluable asset to us. Especially because of the level of, you know, intersectionality that we have to deal with as a multi-issue commission. And I also just wanted to quickly clarify for Senator Kim, um, that the applications go to the governor. And, you know, the governor has ultimate jurisdiction, so sometimes we're asked for input, sometimes not, um, but, uh, Deja Ostrowski, her, before, in her initial term, did reach out to us fully, tried to familiarize herself, um, with the commission, so we, um, are weighing in and support here and, um, are happy to testify, thank you.
Thank you very much, next up is Pana Lope McKenzie. Just on Zoom.
Not present, Chair.
Uh, in support, Ki Nani Okalani Kahoolo Hano Hano on Zoom.
Also not present, Chair.
Uh, also in support, Natalie Hussey-Burdick in support, Nina Scheck in support, Sharnae Freitas in support, and Dr. Leanne K. Fox also in support. Uh, member, that's all the testimony we have on GM seven eighty nine, any members, any questions for the testifiers?
I have a question. Allah. Oh, wait, actually, I'm sorry, it's not. Yeah.
Okay.
I, 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 yeah, Chair.
Okay. Uh, so, um, uh, Mr. Strowski, would you like to make an opening statement?
Yes, thank you so much, uh, Chair Rhodes and members of the committee. And I apologize, I'm not there in person, I had originally a plan to be, but I am dealing with a COVID exposure quarantine, and so um, I really appreciate the opportunity to appear via Zoom. Yeah, yeah, even though we are opening up, so thank you so much. Um, I remember meeting with you all shortly before COVID on my first appointment to the commission. And it has definitely been a challenge, but also a great opportunity for us to expand our input at the commission, having meetings via Zoom and really expand, I think especially for me as the Oahu Commissioner, the collaboration with, uh, other islands, um, and being able to be, have those meetings and have more community input. And, um, so that's why I'm very proud with what the commission was able to do to raise the level of our policy and advocacy, to be what I think is kind of the legacy of Patsy Meeke, who established the commission in, um, nineteen sixty four, you know, that was even before Title Nine. And so we really are trying to be at the vanguard of, for, for international and not just this, the state of Hawaii, but, uh, to follow in the legacy of Patsy Meeke and doing advocacy in spaces uh, where a lot of times, uh, we don't just have the opportunity for marginalized women, but women of color to talk about issues with leadership, issues with inclusion in society, and, and that's what I've been the most proud of that we've been able to do during COVID. So, um, I'm asking to be reappointed, um, and to be able to continue that and see how we can move from that advocacy during COVID to incorporating that level of community engagement uh, in the future, so mahalo so much and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, members, questions? Oh, okay, I do have one for you, I forgot who you work for, who do you work for?
So I work for the Medical Legal Partnership, my boss, Dina Scheck, she is the one who founded the Medical Legal Partnership um, with, in a partnership with Community Health Center in Koko Kalahi Valley and the Richardson School of Law. So we work as, uh, she actually submitted testimony on my behalf, so she's very supportive of me continuing in this role, um, I had initially, you know, I have a lot of policy experience and now I'm doing more direct services as a lawyer, and so I wanted to have an outlet to do what you all do every day, is those systemic fixes that we really need and incorporating those community voices, so she's very supportive. Uh, my employer is RCUH, actually through the University of Hawaii, because we are a project of the Richardson School of Law. So we train new lawyers.
Have you, in, in your time on the commission, have you had any, uh, situations where you had a conflict of interest with your employer and what the, what the commission wanted to do?
I have not, um, I will say, and I know because it's been brought up, I'll directly address it. There has been, I think, a longstanding, um, advocacy, uh, around how do we regulate midwifery and traditional birth attendance, and I know that's a conversation I was involved with, um, even testifying at the legislature when I was a policy advocate with the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Um, so I could see that that would look like a conflict when there's me as an attorney that is giving people advice about what they can and cannot do um, under the current law, but I think that's why I want to serve on the commission. It's a place where we can think about fixes in law and what we can have happen. Um, and so my boss is very supportive of that idea.
If you had a, if you had what you consider to be a conflict, what would you do?
I would recuse myself from making a decision on that issue and disclose my conflict, um, but I think I don't see a, a conflict coming because I am an attorney that just represent individual clients. But yes, if there was, I would.
All right, thank you. Other questions? Okay, thank you very much for being here, uh, we'll go ahead and move on to the, I believe, the last GM of the day. She is, uh, Governor's Message eight sixty for consideration confirmation to board of registration of the island of Hawaii. Philip Barnes for term to expire six thirty twenty twenty six. There's no testimony on this one, Mr. Barnes, are you here? And there's no nominee either, okay, so something to do there, uh, members. Everybody gets a vote anyway. Okay, we'll take a recess, recess. Okay, back in for, uh, out of recess for decision making on our, uh, four thirty agenda, first up is Governor's Message seven seven one. Submitting for consideration and confirmation to Defender Council of Women Trial nominee David How, Hayakawa for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty six. Recommendation is to, and then we remember the. Advise and consent. Questions or concerns? If not, Senator Casio, thank you for taking the votes.
Yeah. Members, we're voting on GM seven seven one. Um, recommendation is to advise and consent, Chair Rhodes.
Aye.
Uh, Senator Kyo Ho Kalali is excused. I vote aye. Senator Gabbard is excused, Senator Kim. Senator Lee.
Aye.
Senator Pavella is excused. Chair, your measure is, or advice is adopted.
Thank you very much, uh, next up is GM seven eighty eight, this is, um, Cameron McCartney for a term to expire June thirty twenty twenty five for the Commission on the Status of Women, a recommendation here is to buy, advise and consent, questions or concerns? If not, Senator Casio.
Okay, members, we're voting on GM seven eight eight to advise and consent, Chair Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Kyo Ho Kalali is excused, I vote no. Senator Gabbard is excused. Senator Kim.
Aye.
Senator Lee.
Aye.
Senator Pavella is excused.
Yes, thank you very much, next up is GM eight eighteen, this is for Ralph Krishni for the, uh, Board of Registration the islands of Kauai and Neheha for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty six. Uh, recommendation is to advise and consent. Questions, concerns?
Uh, members, we're voting on GM eight one eight, uh, to advise and consent with the members present, four members present. Uh, any reservations? Any no vote? Chair, your measure is, or the advising consent is adopted.
Okay, thank you, next up is GM seven eighty nine, this is for Commission on the Status of Women, Gooon Trail nominee Marissa Adaro for term to expire six thirty twenty twenty five, uh, recommendation here is to advise and consent. Questions, concerns, seeing none, Senator Casio.
Member is voting on GM seven eight nine. Uh, to advising consent with the four members present, any reservations? I, I have reservations. Any other reservations or no votes? Your advising consent is adopted.
Thank you, next up is GM seven eighty seven, this is also for Commission on the Status of Women, Gooon Trail nominee Deja Ostrowski for a term to expire six thirty twenty twenty six, recommendations to advise and consent. Question, concern, seeing none, Senator Casio.
Hey, members, um, voting on GM seven eight seven, advising consent. Um, of the four members present, any reservations? Any no votes? Okay, Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you, finally is, uh, Governor's Message eight sixty, this is from Philip Barnes for the Board of Registration of the Island of Hawaii. Return expires six thirty twenty twenty six, he wasn't here, there was no testimony, but he is on the job, I have spoken to him, I'm confident he can do it. So, uh, the hard, it's hard to find people to take these positions, so I would, uh, recommend advising consenting. Questions or concerns, if not, Senator Casio.
Okay, members, we're voting on GM eight six zero with all four members present, any reservations? Any no votes? It, Chair, advising consent adopted.
Thank you very much, have a good weekend, we're adjourned.